The April 22 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each city council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the council on issues related to Eden Prairie city business. This portion of time is from 6:30 to 6:55 generally on the first and third Tuesdays of each month when we have our meetings. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the date of the meeting. The phone number of the city manager's office is 949-8412. When you call, please, if you leave a message, please leave your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time is available after scheduled speakers, then I will invite anybody else from the audience that wants to address the council to speak to us at this time. These portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. If you have any questions about open podium, again, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412. We have a few items under proclamations and presentations tonight. The very first thing is the Eden Prairie Gives Week proclamation, and we've got with us tonight Mark Weber, who's the Eden Prairie Community Foundation Director. And you, Mark, are going to accept the proclamation and make brief remarks. While you're coming up, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas throughout Eden Prairie's history, inspiring and inventive residents and businesses have banded together and pooled resources, raised funds, and encouraged giving to support and further a number of important causes invaluable to the community's well-being. And whereas these efforts have left an indelible impact on the quality of life in Eden Prairie, resulting in the creation of nonprofits, service clubs, and other organizations that on a daily basis lift the community in charity and philanthropy. And whereas the enduring work and legacy of these organizations, their members and their employers have touched many thousands and even multiple generations of Eden Prairie citizens. And whereas the significance of Eden Prairie's overall philanthropy was demonstrated in a 2012 study by the Chronicle of Philanthropy, which showed Eden Prairie ranking a very respectable 222nd out of 11,522 U.S. communities in total contributions to charity of $71.1 million. And whereas these philanthropic and charitable giving efforts have demonstrated the power that giving back to the community has in creating positive change, improving lives, adding amenities, and supplementing all that is provided by our city and school institutions. And whereas this effort to carefully nourish, develop, and enhance Eden Prairie's quality of life teaches its children about philanthropy and the value of neighbor helping neighbor. And whereas we can be grateful to the philanthropic individuals and organizations who have contributed so much to our social needs, our cultural life, the improvement of Eden Prairie, and the spirit of community, now therefore be it resolved that May 3 through 10, 2014, is proclaimed Eden Prairie Gives Week in Eden Prairie in recognition of and gratitude for the work of nonprofits, service clubs, other community-minded organizations, and individuals whose spirit of philanthropy, charitable giving, and volunteerism have made Eden Prairie a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you, Mark, for what you and the foundation are doing. And you have a report?
Well, thank you. It sounds like that proclamation could have used a moderator.
I wonder if I could find one.
This is the foundation's effort to put a spotlight on.
Oh, you know what? Could you go over there? I'm sorry, the microphone there is not working. I meant to announce that. I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes, this is the foundation's effort to put a spotlight on charitable giving and community service in Eden Prairie. And, and most importantly, I hope motivate and inspire some additional people to get involved in giving back to the community, whether it's joining a service club or volunteering with a nonprofit here in Eden Prairie. We have a number of events planned for that week. The anchor of which is the foundation's May 3 EP Gives Week. But there are some additional events, charitable giving workshops, Bridges Out of Poverty workshop, some of the classes. Foundation for Eden Prairie Schools has an event that week. So we hope you can attend those. I know many of you already have plans to do so. This, we hope this will be an annual event and grow over the years. So thank you for proclaiming it, May 3 through 10 as EP Gives Week. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The other proclamation tonight is regarding Arbor Day, which is May 3, 2014. This is April. We're doing it a little bit early, but our council meeting for May, the first meeting, is May 6. So we wanted to do it prior to the actual day of the event. It makes most sense that way. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood projects. And whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways, now therefore I, Nancy Turea-Lukens, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, do hereby proclaim May 3, 2014, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to grow them in hearts, and promote the well-being of present and future generations. So we've been doing this Arbor Day proclamation ever since I started on the council in 1894 with you, Ron. So we're longstanding supporter of Arbor Day and have been a Tree City USA for, I don't know. Jay, do you have any?
Thirty years.
Thirty years? That's what I was going to guess. Okay, so the last thing that we have in this portion of the meeting is an update. Do we have John McCarthy here?
No, we do not. So I was wondering, I think, if you look at your annotated agenda, we have under the report of the Park Director, we have an update. So maybe if we could give them time to come here.
Okay.
And then just cover it at that point in the meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay. The idea was that an update on the Miracle Field fundraising efforts. So is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second. Any items to add, delete?
Just one item under reports of council members, 14A.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion, motion for approval of the minutes for the city council workshop held on Tuesday, March 18?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held that same date? Move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Abstain.
Thank you. Consent calendar, is there a motion for approval of those items?
You have to pull one item. Mayor and council, we actually asked that you pull four items. The last four items all have a relationship to UHG.
Okay.
And then our city attorney has an update. When we get to the O through R, has an update on item R, and there's a golden rod related to R. So we'd ask that you take one action on A through N, and then we'll follow up with O through R.
Okay, thank you.
I would move approval of the consent calendar items A through N.
Second. And you desire to pull anything for discussion there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, items O through R, Mr. Getchell.
Yeah, city attorney has a comment.
With respect to item R, there's a golden rod on your desk that clarifies that the contract with HRS, SRF, pardon, too many acronyms you said, SRF is in the amount of $1,487,500 with a contingency provided of $114,020, as opposed to saying that the contract was in an amount not to exceed the sum of those two, which was $1,601. So that's the clarification on that, no substantive change. And I would just note that for item O, we have a slight revision in the exhibit that's to be attached to the petition identifying the easement as an easement, so.
Okay. All right, is there a motion for approval of items O through R on the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
And I abstain.
Thank you. Our first public hearing tonight is on Rita Ridge and Eden Prairie Woods reassessments. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, these items are together because they're related to kind of re, slightly reconfiguring the assessments on these two separate projects. Actually, typically, Hennepin County would take these kind of housekeeping items separately, but I believe in the last year or two, they've asked the city councils to, to take final vote on any reassessments or slight changes in assessments that are done. So these are related to the two projects. One, first Rita Ridge, which you remember just last October assessing for that project. And at that time, the levy was certified. That was prior to the recording of the actual plat for Rita Ridge. So there were some changes due to how we allocate the assessments over those properties. The second is with Eden Prairie Woods, so that dates back now to October of 2012. And with the Eden Prairie Woods assessment, there was an error made in assessing Outlot C, an outlot that shouldn't have been assessed. So when you reallocate the assessment over the remaining parcels, that slightly changes those amounts. So we ask that you hold a public hearing, which was published in the April 3 edition of the Eden Prairie News and sent to 12 property owners, and then take action in one resolution on these reassessments.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Getchell? Is there anybody from the audience that wants to address the council on these reassessments? Okay, council, is there a motion?
I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the Rita Ridge and Eden Prairie Woods reassessments.
Is there a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Our second public hearing tonight is the MAC Development Parcel 6. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor. I, if you don't mind, I'm going to kind of cover the, the two items together, parcel two and parcel six. You may recall, in February, you had a council meeting and public hearings related to seven parcels that are part of potential MAC development. And you approved and continued on for approval all but two of those parcels, parcels two and six, the potential rezoning of property for office development on actually the further east and further west part, and continue that to council meeting in March and now to this council meeting in April. And the city attorney's going to go through both of these items, and then we're going to have another public hearing because we, this is actually a new public hearing, even though we covered these previously. But I did want to note that actually parcel six, MAC withdrew its application for rezoning on parcel six. So they're not moving forward with the rezoning at that time. So actually, your action there would be to accept the withdrawal of their application. There isn't a need for a public hearing. And then parcel two would require, you know, that we hold the public hearing and then consider that parcel again. And we, MAC is here and staff is here to answer any questions that you may have related to that. So first of all, would be if you have any comments or questions on parcel six of MAC, and then we would hold our public hearing for parcel two.
Okay. Are there any questions for MAC regarding parcel six? Okay. Hearing that there are none, is there a motion?
I would move to accept the withdrawal of the application by MAC for rezoning of MAC Development Parcel 6 and return the plans to the applicant without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. So that brings us to parcel two. And Mr. Getchell, you set the stage for that well. Should we just move right into public hearing for that?
We certainly can.
Okay. Is there anybody that wants to address the council on the rezoning of parcel two? Okay, if you'd step up and, we have to use that desk again, I'm sorry, and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kayla Addis, and I live at 16101 Valley Road. So it'd be right across the street from parcel two. I have in front of me, you guys don't have the projector up today, but I think we should. If you put it down on the desktop, there's a, is there an X there?
Right.
Yeah, to your right.
Be, um.
Oh.
There you go.
Getting close.
Yeah, they've taken our X away. That's good.
X doesn't mark the spot.
Okay, so it's the diagram on, yep, the top corner there.
Mm-hmm.
We just have a question. As you can see, this is the easement that's on our deed from the airport. It covers our property and, which brings to the first question. If the airport is lifting the easement on the property that they are building on, will they be lifting the easement on our property as well as the other properties affected in our neighborhood? And then, which brings me to a second question. It's about the safety zone. The opinions of MAC would have a conflict of interest as they are the ones receiving revenue from this build. How is this city determined it was safe to build in an area that is deemed a no-build zone per the state guidelines? So those are my two questions.
Good questions. Who's going to address the safety zone question?
Actually, we have members of MAC in the audience, and I think it'd be appropriate for Ms. Reeve to address that.
Okay, so the question of lifting of easements and also the safety zone question. If you could address those, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members. With regards to the first question, there are no existing easements over MAC property that would need to be lifted. The property, easement that exists over the Commenters' property is an navigation easement, and that will remain in place.
So there's no navigation easement on your property, though?
No, there is not, because we can control the height of structures on our own property, as well as the type of development. So there isn't a need to have one over our parcel. With regard to the safety zones, parcel two lies outside of Zone A, which is, for lack of a better term, the no-build zone. Parcel two lies in Zone B, which does allow development to a certain density, development of a certain type, according to the draft ordinance that was prepared by the Joint Airport Zoning Board. Zone B does allow residential property as well, but on a limited basis.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could supplement just a little bit with that explanation about the navigation easement, so we're talking about a heist, an easement that restricts the height of buildings. And as a part of real estate law, if you're the owner of a piece of property, you grant an easement to allow a third party access over your property. So if you're the owner of property, you never need to grant yourself an easement right to enter your own property. And in fact, when you acquire property, if your neighbor, if you have an easement across your neighbor's property for whatever purpose, access, and you acquire your neighbor's property, the easement as a matter of law evaporates because you know there's a merger between the easement and your title to the property. So there's, one, no need for it, and, two, if there had been an easement there in favor of MAC, it would evaporate because it's their property.
Right, okay. I have it. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to address the council? I'm surprised because we did get quite a few letters this week about parcel two. Nobody else? Yes, if you would like to come and testify from over at the desk, please, and give your name and address for the record, please. Yes.
Vince Tashi over on 101 Hilltop Road. That's a little ways away from the, from the area about, we do have a very nice view of that, that natural setting down from our backyard, and some of the other neighbors appreciate that view. So I guess we would like to consider leaving it as rural, if at all possible. First of all, just to leave it, leave it as it is. Second of all, if Rita two decide they wanted to build on it, perhaps they could move it more to the east, eastern side, or build a very minimal structure that would be, would not obstruct any of the views of many of the property owners. And perhaps that would help keep the, the value of their properties. You know, some of the reasons why my wife and I bought the property was because of the, some of that view that we, that we conceived, so. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Mr. Getchell, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor, I was thinking, I know it's been a few months since we had the meeting, but it's probably always a good idea to kind of clarify a little bit of the process because we had a couple of questions before the meeting as well, that the action that the council took on the five parcels previously and would consider on the one parcel tonight is simply to rezone the parcels. And I think there are some questions of if there's this type of office building there, you know, what could the height be? Where could the entrances be? What would the parking be? And at a future date, the council would have to consider any site plans or approvals of those particular projects. So I know that, you know, some of the comments that came in on how the buildings could be laid out, or how the traffic would flow, or the entrances, would all be taken under consideration at a future date. We don't know when that would be if there were projects coming forward on any of these parcels. So the action tonight is simply to rezone, but MAC did do, took some time to give the city some idea of concepts, what could go there, what would it possibly look like if they were to build. But that may not be exactly how that works out. That being said, we do have standards in terms of heights and setbacks and, and design standards on buildings that are in our city code that we would expect them to follow.
Right, and I, we did follow along with the other meetings that were held online, so I understood that part of it. It's just that, I guess we prefer to leave it as it is, if at all possible. But I understand there's, you know, the issues that are at hand here, so.
Yeah, I, I think probably the whole council, council would love to have it stay rural. We don't really have control over that, because even if we don't rezon it, it doesn't mean that they can't do what they want with developing their property. But when a proposal, when and if a proposal comes for any of these parcels that we've rezoned for MAC, neighbors will again be notified extensively about the process and the plan so that you can show up at public hearings and planning commission meetings and provide input.
We've lived on the property for a little over a year, so we're just kind of learning about a lot of the history and things, too. So we're just kind of, kind of a learning process, too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anybody else that wants to address the council?
I live at 16101 Valley Road, with my wife, who just presented earlier. And I guess I just want to clarify that the state per section Zone A does include that parcel that they want to develop. It's not the joint standard board, or whatever that's called. I'm wondering about the state guidelines. How is the council feel that it's okay to reduce the state guidelines that they put in place? And has any safety studies been done on that, specifically on making it smaller than the state? Because you're the ones who are now pulling the trigger on this, so you're the ones who are saying, yes, it's safe, MAC, go ahead and build on it. Thanks.
Mr. Russell, do you want to address that?
Yes, the state guidelines and the rules are a model ordinance that are promulgated by the commissioner. The Jasby Board that was convened came, came up with a specific zoning regulations for the city. Covers about more than a half, I think about two-thirds of the, of the city. And that is before the commissioner for consideration. The commissioner has not acted on that, probably for a variety of reasons. There's some court cases pending in state court before the Court of Appeals and the Minnesota Supreme Court as to whether or not those types of regulations amount to a taking. None of that, however, interferes with and, in review, interferes with the city's power to zone property. If those regulations that are in the model ordinance that are promulgated by the state affected the city's ability to zone its property, then we would not be able to take any action with respect to two-thirds of our city. And that's simply not the case. And there is specific language, and I provided previously, a little over a month ago, a letter of opinion to the city, that because of the language of the statute, it's clear it does not interfere with the city's regular zoning process. And so you may go ahead and zone any property within the city without concern about violating those model regulations. Once, once and if the Jasby ordinance goes into effect, it will be, in effect, an overlay district that will provide essentially heist regulations to our, to our zoning code. In looking at that, we analyzed whether there were any existing properties that would violate that heist regulation, and there, there were not. So it was prospective in looking out to protect navigation zones and flight paths, but it was not impacting any property in terms of making it non-conforming because it had a structure too high, and it was not impacting property in, in the sense that it would limit the property to a heist that was less than what is already in our code with respect to heist limitations.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Yes.
I live up on Hilltop Road, 16071. And I've lived there for 41 years now. And I have, my lot goes all the way down to Valley Road, and the bottom half has pretty much been part of my retirement investment. And I'm wondering how much this will affect the property value, because these people, as these people said, when they bought their properties, that was one of the big selling points, was that natural nature view down there. And we were kind of led to believe all along that it's an airport safety zone, it'll never be built on. So, I'd like to keep it rural. Been rural for me for a long time. I don't have that much time left. But, so, that's my concern. I don't know how it would affect the property value to have whatever built there in the hill where all the realtors say, look at the nice view you have, you know? These guys that have just bought there will say the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none.
I'm just saying, I'm questioning how you guys would be comfortable in the state to build there. I mean, I'm.
Thanks.
I'm not concerned about the regulations, I'm just concerned about how have you guys decided that, yep, it's okay to build. I don't, have you gotten studied or whatever?
I don't think we're being asked that question, really. I mean, because they can build whether or not we do the zoning or not, correct?
If I can address the question, the situation and why we're going through this process is the MAC has indicated its intent to develop its property and asserts the right as an independent unit of government that it does not need permission to go ahead and build. And so, to the prior gentleman's question of wanting to preserve his view, I entirely understand that. The MAC intends to go forward and, and develop its property, as any property owner eventually wants to do. They claim the right to do it without city permission. So we negotiated a process by which they would have to go through our process to receive the zoning authority, and perhaps even more important than that, from the city's point of view, to go through our site plan review process so that whatever was built there would be subject to the standards that the city has applied citywide to all properties. So the issue of. build there, uh, this is the operator of the airport who is governed by its own regulations with respect to safety zones and the use of all the property around the airport. And, uh, it would be hard to fathom that the FAA would allow the MAC to use federal dollars to violate its, the, its own regulations. That simply would not happen. So any development around there will have to comply with the FAA guidelines on uses in and around airports. And then as a part of this process, the overlay is that we're requiring them to comply with our process. Absent this process, we wouldn't be having this meeting. There would have been an informational meeting to the citizens where they could have come and asked questions and seen proposals made by MAC, but there would be no input, no opportunity to, uh, require compliance with our performance standards.
Um, and if I'm correct, most of the property that is, or most of the building that is currently on MAC property is construction that occurred but didn't have to go through a city process for our building standards, correct? So this provides us the opportunity to kind of raise any development that occurs on this parcel to a higher standard?
Uh, that's correct. And, and the property that's there that predates all of this is there because it's aviation-related use and over that type of property, I concede, we have no authority to zone with respect to property devoted to a specific aviation use such as the hangars. We'd like to see prettier hangars, but we don't have any authority over that.
Okay. All right, another comment? Did you want to come up?
My name is Murali Radhakrishnan. I reside, oh, the other one.
Yeah, come to this one that's closer, maybe. That's more comfortable.
My name is Murali Radhakrishnan. I reside at 10020 Frederick Place. So one comment I have is if parcel six can be withdrawn because of resident pressure, why can't parcel two be withdrawn as well because there are so many residences nearby? And keeping that nature, nature area as it is, why can't you put some pressure and keep that, and can withdraw that application as well?
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Case, you want to decide? Go ahead.
Yeah, it just kind of ties into an answer I was thinking from the gentleman the last time that, um, so often seems like there's a difference between the emotions that we might be feeling up here and the rational logic that we have to bring to a situation based on the law. Uh, and if, if I was looking at parcel six again, which we were last time, and having concerns about it, my concerns really were to look at, if this was not the airport, if this was just an open piece of land and a developer purchased it or a private owner owned it and wanted to come into the council to develop it, there's just no way I would ever consider upping three zoning levels, or I think in that case, wasn't it four zoning levels? You have residential housing and the only thing we would typically allow next to a residential housing line would be residential housing that might be a little bit more dense residential housing. It might be multiple housing. That would be about it. We would probably be a stretch to put townhomes in there, where they were jumping, suggesting, jumping three levels up, and we just wouldn't do that. And that's why we spoke out against it. If you look at this case, this is across a road. It's, um, next to a church, so it's already a different kind of a, not that a church is commercial, but it's a different kind of a, a zone feel. So what would I be looking at as a council member? Again, not from a motion side, because from an emotion side, I want open space land everywhere. We all do. Um, but I, I don't own that land and, and, you know, if, if a private owner brings a piece of land before us, America's always honored the actualizing to the greatest, highest potential of that land within reason of, of addressing the needs of its neighbors and contiguous properties. So I am looking at this from a logical, or trying to, a logical, rational and the law standpoint, even though I have my emotions on it, I'm sure I'd like to have it stay open. I, I have some questions about parcel two, but, but again, I'm looking at if it wasn't the airport and a private owner brought this in, what, what would I be considering? And, and I certainly would be allowing this office zoning complex to be considered, and that's what we're doing tonight.
I just have to say one funny, I know, funny thing, sorry, but when Grace Church came in to build there, um, MAC, the MAC sent a representative who stood up before this council, I'll never forget, I think it was June 5th, 2001, that night, unless, we had a house fire that night, that's why I remember that, 11:30, 2:00 p.m. But I, I remember, um, um, the MAC representative standing up and saying basically, don't, don't let this church go in there. Don't let it build there. We're recommending you not let it build there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and my answer back was, buy it. You can't just stand and, and tie the hands of a landowner that owns it, then buy it. Well, it's interesting, tonight, they own it. I mean, my, my answer back would be, you know, to MAC, buy it. Well, they own it and they have, um, certain rights to land that is developable, and that's, that's, of course, what we're debating tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to testify? Okay, is there a motion to close public hearing?
Sure. Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from Merle to Airport Office, A-OFC, subject to the following conditions. Number one, rezoning only that portion of the property located north of the lane identified as runway 10L slash 28R as shown on figures C1.1 and C2.1. Any site plan application will conform to all requirements of the city code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to make the comment that I did receive a fair number of emails prior to this meeting about parcel twos particularly, and, you know, I'm very sympathetic to the wishes of the people that emailed us and even those that didn't, that would love, love to see that area left rural. But I think in the discussions that we've heard tonight, things that Mr. Russell said, and Ron, you certainly eloquently laid out your ideas about things too, I, you know, I, I don't think that we have a choice and I, um, would prefer that this land stay empty, but I think that by approving it and doing this rezoning, it does provide us the opportunity to get a nicer product in there than we might otherwise have if MAC wasn't willing to go through the, um, planning process with us. And, um, I have a lot of faith in that planning process and the residents of the community will have an opportunity to provide input into that process too. So this isn't the end of it. Uh, council member Case?
I just wondered if there, are there proactive measures that we could be, um, starting now maybe as a city in our planning department to be looking at, at protective measures we could at least be ready to offer for the contiguous neighbors, the residents? And even, you know, the, the plan that kind of just in, um, early form came in was, was distasteful in many ways. I mean, I, I obviously had a height that, you know, probably won't end up, but I just wonder if there are not proactive things we could start to think about that would, um, help this process by the time it starts to, you know, come before, some, maybe some future council, but at least have laid the groundwork now.
And I think when we think about office, office can be one-story office. We've got one-story office near us here. Um, it can be a couple of stories. You know, a lot of people are fearful, of course, of a large-sized office building, which I, is not going to happen here. But I think we could just get MAC to work with us on developing some kind of look for this property that would give it a residential look with a hipped roof and things like that, that would make it look more like it fits in the rural residential area.
And maybe be cognizant of Usher. I don't know that we've even really looked at that. We heard some comments today from people that will possibly likely be looking at this. Um, I'd like to have that considered.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Item D is a first reading of an ordinance amending city code chapter 12 relating to preliminary plat approval and final plat release and recording. Mr. Getchel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposal from staff to streamline the process that we currently use with developers in our city code and what's in state statute to all match up in city code. So the first reading of the ordinance related to chapter 12 has really three parts. The first part is actually increasing the validity period for preliminary plat from six months to two years, and that is consistent with, um, what we see in the state statute and we have in our development agreements and, and how the process seems to work best. The second would be, and this is in the packet, you can see it in the planning report, adding certain requirements that the city has prior to releasing a final plat. And again, many of those which you saw in the packet are, are what are required in a development agreement. And then finally adding a, a timeframe of 90 days for, uh, recording of a final plat. And so these items came to the planning commission who voted six-zero to recommend approval at their March 24th meeting. And we're here, staff is here for any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to address the council on this issue? Okay, is there a motion?
Seeing none, I've moved to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance amending chapter 12 relating to preliminary plat approval and final plat release and recording.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval? Move approval.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wickstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens?
Aye.
Our first report tonight is report of councilmember Ron Case.
Yeah, I just had an issue that came up, um, in the last week, and it's actually reminded me of, um, that it's come up probably three times in the last decade, and it's people that call in concerned about a neighbor in a residential area that, um, might have four or five cars, two boats, a camper. Um, a lot of it, if not all of it, may be legal. We, based on ordinance today, parked on pavement, um, but the issue that it is just grows and grows, the cars may run, they might not, they are exposed to, but even if they do, they're old and, and they don't run regularly. So they may be able to start whatever. So I, I guess, uh, the, on the most recent case, they contacted Jim Shadine, who has looked at various properties around the city and says at this point, I'm not quoting him, but it sounds like, um, the ones that are most problematic are, are in compliance. And if we were to have an issue with it as a council, we would want to look possibly at tweaking an ordinance. I'm not interested in that tonight. What I think I'm interested in is, do other cities have this issue? How do they deal with it? Are there other ordinances out there? What does Minneapolis-St. Paul do? You know, I just, I'd like to know some information, some background, if all of you agree that that just, not a big major report, but just, uh, somewhere down the way here in a couple meetings, have a report back, um, this is how other cities deal with this. It, it somewhat could be a, um, age of city issue, and this may be something that we might become more and more concerned about in the next five to 10 years, so maybe proactively again to be ready for that. So I, I, I don't know what your thought is, but, um, I just think I'd like more information.
Okay. I think that sounds like something staff could do. Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing it up. The next item is report of city manager, Mr. Getchel, on aquatic center financing options.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall at the last regular council meeting, uh, we discussed, we actually, we had a public hearing for site plan approval for the proposed aquatics, uh, facility upgrade. We will, obviously, we've had several meetings, uh, related to the facility, and one of the questions that the council had was prior to consideration of the bids, uh, which is scheduled for the next council meeting on, on May 6th in two weeks, and the action potentially needed to finance the project, that you would like, appreciate an overview, overview of financing options and possibilities, much of which has been covered throughout several other meetings and workshops, but the idea that we would just have our financial advisors, our city financial advisors, present you with options for financing, again, many of which I think will be familiar to you, and, um, kind of the, the, some of the options for you as we move toward, uh, this potential project in two weeks. So there is no action requested at all. It's simply a brief presentation by our financial advisors relating to the financing options that are out there that you may be considering, uh, in the coming months. So with that, I ask representatives from Northland Securities to come forward. Rusty Feifeld with Northland Securities will, uh, be presenting you some options.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Rusty Feifeld with Northland Securities. With me tonight is Tammy Aldal, and we've had the pleasure of working with your staff to put together a plan of finance for the aquatic center and to explore some options with you this evening. We have four options to discuss with you tonight. General obligation bonds that are approved by the voters, general obligation bonds, there are general obligation tax abatement bonds, HRA lease revenue bonds, and a variation of that would be an HRA lease revenue bond that is fully secured with your HRA levy. And I'm going to go over each of these in, uh, in a little bit of detail, and I'd be happy to answer questions as we go forward. The basic option provided by state law for any sort of public facility is general obligation bonds by which the voters of the community approve the issuance of bonds. General obligation means that it's backed by the full faith and security of the city in prayer. It basically means that minus any other plans that you have made to pay debt service on the bonds, you're committing to the bondholder that you're going to levy property taxes sufficient to pay debt service on the bonds. General obligation referendum bonds are secured by a debt service levy, so you would levy a tax across all taxable property in the city in prayer sufficient to pay debt service on the bonds on an annual basis. The, uh, the debt service levy is not subject to levy limitation, so you can levy it without any, any limitation. Because of all of these features, it is subject to the lowest interest rate that can be achieved in the marketplace, and it is a AAA rated community. You are privileged with your general obligation debt to get the lowest interest rates that's really possible in the municipal bond market. The nuance with this particular bond issue is you, you do not, as a city council, have legislative authority to issue those bonds without approval of voters. So you would have to take it to a referendum, and those, the amount of bonds would have to be approved by the voters before you could proceed with issuing general obligation referendum bonds. Uh, one other nuance of this particular form of debt is that it does count against your statutory debt limit. State law limits general obligation debt with a lot of asterisks to that statement to 3% of the total estimated market value of property in, in prayer. Couple of reasons why this doesn't make any difference in your decision, one is your debt limit is, is high because of the amount of taxable property value in prayer. Your current debt, net debt limit, taking into account debt that is existing that already counts against your debt limit, is in excess of $200 million. So you can see that, that this debt and anything else that you can conceive of, even if it applied to the debt limit, uh, would be well within your capacity to bow. The, uh, the other issue that I would bring to your attention is the majority of debt that you issue is not subject to the debt limit. A lot of debt issued that are in Minnesota, four Minnesota cities, is specifically exempted from counting against your debt limit. Voter-approved debt, however, is not. A second form of general obligation bonds that are available to finance the aquatic center project are general obligation tax abatement bonds. These bonds, as with voter-approved bonds, are secured by the full faith and credit of the city. So from a credit perspective, you're making the same pledge to these bonds as you would make to bonds that are approved by the voters. The difference becomes in the mechanism for collecting revenue to pay debt service on the bonds, where the referendum bonds are a straight debt service levy. The tax abatement bonds create the same mechanism. It's a citywide tax levy, but it's called an abatement levy, and there's a process that you have to go through to authorize that abatement levy. But that, that mechanically, it's the same thing. It's a general obligation pledge paid back by a citywide property tax levy. For that- For that reason, it will attract identical interest rates to geo-bonds that are approved by the voters. So, from a, from a bond market perspective, if I'm a potential holder of these bonds, I don't really care whether they're voter-approved bonds or tax abatement bonds. The security that I have in those bonds is identical, and therefore, the interest rates that you will attract are identical between those two forms of general obligation bonds. The process for authorizing general obligation bonds is, they need to be approved by the city council after a public hearing where you authorize the tax abatement levy pursuant to state law. So, it's a legislative action by the city council and a public hearing is required to take that action. These bonds, because of the specific authorizing authority for tax abatement bonds, do not count against your statutory debt limit. So, you've got geo-bonds that are counted against the debt limit and geo-bonds that do not. This form of financing has become kind of the flavor of the week for financing recreational facilities. Last year, the city of Redbury did a very comparable financing for the expansion of its Beelandburg Sports Center, also $16 million with a tax abatement bonds. Two years ago, the cities of Savage and West St. Paul issued smaller amounts for the construction of indoor sports facilities or sports domes. And the city of Burnsville, several years ago, did a comparable project for the construction of its performing arts center. So, while you look at tax abatement bonds and say, well, that's not specifically a recreational facility finance authority, it's clear within the statute and within practice in the state of Minnesota that this tool is available for the purposes which you're considering for the expansion of the Aquatic Center. There are no other general obligation bond finance options for recreational facilities in the state of Minnesota. The other alternative that has been used with some frequency are lease revenue bonds. And this is really the marriage of two different financing authorities. Your housing and redevelopment authority has the ability to issue revenue bonds. You, as a city, have the ability to enter into lease purchase agreements to acquire your own personal property. So, essentially, what you're doing is marrying those two authorities. So, the HRA is issuing revenue bonds, they are secured by a lease with the city to make lease payment sufficient to pay the bonds back. It's not a general obligation debt of the city, it is a debt that is secured solely by those lease revenues. It's important to note that under state law, the lease is subject to what's called non-appropriation. So, I was listening to comments under the open forum before the council meeting, and that explanation is correct, that each year, you must annually make the decision to appropriate money to, sufficient to pay the lease payment. And you have the legal authority not to appropriate those funds, which makes it a riskier bargain for the investor. Now, we've been doing this for decades, and the bondholders, the investors that purchase these bonds understand the risk that's associated with them, but it is higher risk, and therefore, it will carry a higher rate of interest. The revenue is the same as the other tools that I've talked about. You have the ability to levy a tax across all taxable property in the city of Edin Prairie to make debt service for a, the payment under these lease revenue bonds. And I should note, historically, those, the levy for this purpose, which is really to pay debt service, to pay debt of another political subdivision, which is the technical tranche that that tax levy comes out of, has not been subject to levy limits. So, it functions the same way as the tax levy for other bonds. Tax levy not subject to levy limits. As I alluded to a moment ago, it's more expensive than general obligation bonds. There'll be some additional costs. It is likely that you would have a debt service reserve, that you would not have a general obligation bonds. The cost of issuance is higher. I wish I could give you a more specific range of the interest rate spread that we would anticipate, that it is somewhere between one-half and 1% above a comparable general obligation bonds. As that slide alludes to, I think we're still suffering from what we would call the Badness Heights effect. If you're familiar with the Badness Heights Sports Center, two years ago, the city of Badness Heights exercised its ability to non-appropriate for $25 million worth of debt on its sports center. So, the investment community knows that that possibility exists. Now, they would look at this project and say, the risk of the city of Edin Prairie not appropriating on the expansion of its aquatic center and giving up rights to that investment is slim to none. Nonetheless, that thought lingers in their minds and it further increases the cost of doing debt in this manner. Approval is necessary for this. The HRA issues the bonds and the city council approves the lease purchase agreement. So, there are two authorizations that apply to this. It does, to be noted, count against your debt limit. Lease purchase agreements in excess of $1 million count against the statutory debt One variation of this theme that we've recently started working with is the ability to use your HRA levy as a backup. For all intents and purposes, it would be the same lease revenue bond mechanism, but the HRA, the HRA would pledge its statutory levy, which is approximately $1.6 million today gross, as a backup. So, in the event of non-appropriation, the HRA does have a revenue source to pay the bonds back, which increases the security to the bondholder in the event of non-appropriation by the city. It reduces, but does not eliminate the difference from the general obligation bonds. Because of the unique nature of each one of these, I would be hard pressed to tell you what that differentiation really becomes, but just understand that there's a slight cost difference. So, this data really compares the key elements of the three primary alternatives, the geo-referendum bond, the geo-tax abatement bond, and lease revenue bonds, comparing general obligation with an annual appropriation lease. All three of them are secured by a citywide property tax. Both general obligation bonds have comparable costs, both in issuance and of interest expense, who approves them, and whether or not they're subject to the debt limit. As you think about moving forward, this chart compares changes in the bond buyers index. This is the 20-year A-rated bond buyers index, and it's kind of our prime rate, so it's the easiest way to show trends in the bond market. If you look at the shorter black line in the middle of the chart, that's the trend in the bond buyers index for this year. And the reason I put the chart together in this manner is to kind of compare what happens year to year and are there periods where interest rates tend to trend favorably towards issuers? And we're certainly headed into one of those periods. Typically, as you're, going to late spring and early summer, interest rates tend to trend down, and interest rates in 2014 are following that direction. One of the things that will work to your advantage is there's a lack of supply in the marketplace right now. So, debt of the city of Edin Prairie is very high quality and will certainly attract investors. And this suggests that moving forward, we're headed into a good time in the marketplace. I wouldn't pay too much attention to the red line that stands out prominently on this chart, where an interest rate spikes up wildly. That happened last year, where Phil Chandler Benaki opened his mouth and said, oh, I think we're going to stop the quantitative easing now. And the marketplace reacted to that and interest rates went up dramatically, and I think somewhat artificially. And while we can't control what happens in the bond market, certainly, there's nothing like that immediately on the horizon that suggests like you're headed, suggests that you're headed into that period. And frankly, if we're running into those circumstances, again, we simply delay the issuance of the bonds. This final chart, we prepare estimates of interest rates several times a week. This is the most recent chart that I had, and it compares, at the bottom is the AAA general obligation interest rate. And you can see how, as you move to lower credit quality, and eventually, the top line is a non-rated bond. The value that you receive is a AAA rated credit and the interest rate spread, which over $16 million worth of bonds, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of interest expense savings, if not millions, over the life of the bonds. So, this gives you a sense of to where interest rates are. If you were to take an average coupon on the AAA scale for 20 years, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 2.9% long-term interest rate for general obligation bonds, non-bank qualified. So, that concludes my comments. Be happy to answer any questions that you have about these finance options. And as I tell people when I speak with them, there are no dumb questions, so if it's troubling you, I'm happy to try and answer it.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, geo-tax abatement bond, would there be any reason not to use that? As it seemed like the most reasonable, cheapest.
From a financial perspective, there is no reason that I can tell you. You're correct. It is, it is, it's an option that gives you the lowest cost of capital.
So, what's the real disadvantage of using them? Because I assume that's what we would use? Or is there a disadvantage that would make us think otherwise?
I think as you're faced with the decision, you listen to comments about people that say, you should vote or you should not vote. It's a matter of policy about how you approach these decisions, and we try to avoid those matters of policy as financial advisors. No, I have no particular reason to say that you're not advised to use tax abatement bonds to finance these facilities. As you can see, it has become a tool that Minnesota cities have said, we have the ability to finance it in the same way had we gone to the voters to do this, and having gone through the effort to decide whether or not we want to do these facilities, we have an obligation to finance them in the most cost-effective means that we can, and this certainly affords you that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Feifeld, did I hear you correctly? I think you said that the cost of issuance and the cost of debt are the same for geo-referendum as they are for geo-tax abatement?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you happen to know what Edina is using for their outdoor rink and sports dome that they just approved?
You know, my apologies, Mr. Getchell, asking that question last week, and I did not go and do my homework. Having been financial advisor to the city of Edina in the past, I will tell you that I think they're probably relying on a special law that Edina has to do recreational facilities. If I remember my ancient history, we have used those general obligation recreational facility bonds that are unique to Edina. I've never found another community that has that debt issuing authority to do ice rink, golf course improvements, now dating back 20 years ago.
Without a referendum?
Without a referendum.
How did they get that permission?
If I recall correctly, again, your taxing numbers, I haven't had to use for a while, but I think this law dates back to 1964. It's really been on the books for quite some time, and it's Edina.
Okay. It's Edina. Okay. All right. I agree with Kathy. It sounds like geo-tax abatement would be the sensible way to go. I'm pretty wary of the idea of having to reappropriate money every year to cover the HRA lease revenue bonds, for example. I mean, having been on the council when there were levy limits that were put in place by the legislature, that would be pretty tough to deal with. There'd be a temptation to not appropriate. And then, we'd have that whole ball of wax that Badness Heights had, so I don't like that idea. Any other council members want to ask any questions?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. I guess, you know, in terms of, it looks like the geo-referendum versus geo-tax abatement, I mean, we end up at the same cost of money ultimately. It's really, the only difference is some of the caveats between, you know, do we have to go to a voter referendum to do it? And then, also, the referendum bonds count against our debt limit, where the tax abatement do not count against our debt limit. So, there's some advantage, you know, with the tax abatement.
Yes. Definitely. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Getchell, do you want to just kind of outline what will happen at the meeting on May 6th? Thank you, Mr. Feifeld.
I certainly can, Mayor. So, on May 6th, at the next meeting, as Mr. Lothammer mentioned, we should have the bids. I believe the bid opening would be sometime next week. Then, the week after would be the council considering the bids, possibly awarding the bids and potentially entering into a contract. So, that's one action item in and amongst itself. The other would be if you ought to go the tax abatement route, that does require a public hearing. So, we would have the public hearing, and you would need to pass a resolution authorizing the city to issue those bonds. It would be a later date, as you know, because we need to, a later date that that actual bond, awarding the bond bids would occur at a later date, but you'd be authorizing the issuance. So, we would probably have, as was mentioned before, the presentation on the bids and the project, an overview of the project, a public hearing related to the project, and then actions related to the bids, and then action related to the financing. And then, it would be a future meeting then, that you would, as we do with all of our debt issuances, a future meeting, you would, then our financial advisor would come back and present you with the bids related to the bonding.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to talk a little bit about that public hearing for the next meeting. This has been a really interesting process to be involved in, because it's involved a lot of public input. And we've had over 10 Park and Rec Commission and City Council meetings since 2012 on this issue. We've had two open houses, multiple user group meetings, public hearings at Planning Commission meetings, a survey to aquatic participants, information distributed by emails and through city distribution lists, articles in the Star Tribune, the Edin Prairie News and the Sun Current, information on KSTP, two articles published in Life of the Prairie, multiple letters to the editor. Councilmember Aho, you did two commentaries to get the message out. An informational article on bonding and financing by the city manager, a commentary by Park and Rec Director, City Connect Survey on issue, presentation at Fox Jet Board Meeting, presentations at multiple city and school facility use advisory committee meetings. Those are, that's a committee made up of city staff, a city council member, a school staff, school board member, and community members. Updates to school administrative staff. We've had multiple Facebook posts, the city manager blog on the topic, Park and Rec Director tweets, thank you for that, Jay. A topic in multiple state of the city presentations. We've had presentations to the Rotary Alliance Club. Posters and schematics have been displayed at the community center. So, there has been a lot of opportunity for public input, a lot of opportunity for this project to get kind of, to evolve and get massaged, so that it meets the needs of as many users as possible. But, I'd like to point out that this hasn't all just been going on in the last two years. We've been hearing about pool issues for what, probably 10 or 12 years. So, it's been on the horizon for a long time, where we've looked at the need for this. And so, we're really pleased with all the public input with all of this. As Mr. Getchell mentioned, a public hearing is not required for the accepting of bids, which is technically the first agenda item that we'll have at next month's meeting. The public hearing is required for the geo-tax abatement bonds. We will be having a public hearing after those two presentations. And because of the number of people that have provided input to this project, and the number of people that we've seen that have attended council meetings in the past when we've discussed this, I anticipate that we're going to have a healthy number of people appearing that evening. So, I decided I needed to clarify some ground rules for this public hearing. Each speaker will be given a maximum of three minutes to speak. This is typical of all county board meetings. It's typical of all Metro Council meetings, and we've used this format before when we anticipate quite a number of people. And then, I would like to make it clear that this is not a question and answer. It's not an interactive event. A public hearing is an opportunity for you to state your opinion in three minutes. We do, of course, want you to get answers to questions that you have, so please contact the Park and Rec Director, the city manager, or a council member if you have specific questions that you need answered. Questions asked during the public hearing won't be answered at that time, but we'll have city staff get back to you with answers after the meeting is over. These rules should let things move along a little more smoothly and more thoroughly for all concerned. So, I just wanted to make those ground rules clear at this point in time, three weeks before that next meeting. Any questions? Okay. The next item is a report of the Community Development Director on Thrive MSP 2040. Ms. Jeremiah.
Your Honor, council members, the Metropolitan Council has released the Thrive MSP 2040, as well as their Regional Growth Forecast 2040, which are broken down by each individual city. And we have until April 28th of this year to comment on these items. And this is basically something that the Metropolitan Council does every 10 years to develop a vision for the region. And this, as I said, goes out to 2040, so approximately the next 30 years from the last time that they
time that they did this. And there are five outcomes that they have identified, this time stewardship, prosperity, equity, livability, and sustainability. And these are the policies that need to be addressed in our next comprehensive plan update. And that will need to be done by 2018, but we have already started some of the preliminary work toward that regard. And you will see, if you look in the Planning Commission Report, some comments from staff with regard to the new policies, the new outcomes that they're looking for, as well as the types of additional items that are going to need to be addressed in the future comprehensive plan. So this is kind of big picture at this point. Throughout the rest of this year and early 2015, the Metropolitan Council will be putting out more detailed policy plans on water resources, housing, transportation, and regional parks. So at that point, we'll have more detailed information to comment upon. But right now, we just have some very general comments. And in general, we do feel that we can address the new policies and outcomes that the Met Council has identified. The area that would need the most work in our comprehensive plan has to do with sustainability and addressing issues related to climate change and reducing greenhouse gases. But again, that's something that has kind of been a bit in the works with regard to more sustainability initiatives with the city. With regard to the growth forecast, these are kind of updates from the more, the most recent ones before this took us out to 2030 and now we're going out to 2040. So there is some additional growth shown, including 1,000 additional households in that 10-year period and about 4,500 new employees in that period. And again, we have kind of looked generally with regard to whether we feel that we could accommodate that additional growth. And it does look feasible with some minor tweaks to our comprehensive plan. The one thing that we want to comment to the Metropolitan Council is that this is really dependent on a more detailed analysis of our infrastructure capacity. And we want to ensure that we can accommodate that growth within our existing infrastructure, our planned infrastructure, without additional cost or with costs that we have identified sources. So we don't want to be obviously subjected to additional costs that we can't reasonably afford to accommodate this growth. But generally speaking, it should be consistent with the type of growth we're already anticipating in our major center area and Golden Triangle area. So what we're asking for tonight is just any comments or differences of opinion with staff that you would like to offer this evening before we write basically a comment letter to the Metropolitan Council at this stage, knowing that there will be more details in the future. Questions or comments for Ms. Jeremiah? Councilmember Aho?
I did attend a forum, actually, a forum and a roundtable on Thrive MSP 2040 today, as a matter of fact. And we discussed, we had some experts speak on behalf of what their read and take on the project was. And I do have some concerns about some of the direction that the Met Council is taking in terms of forcing higher density, higher density development. And I think that if you look at affordability of housing, it was shown, there were some clear facts shown that forcing the higher density and transit-oriented development doesn't necessarily yield higher, I guess, higher, I'm trying to think of, I've lost some words here, but a higher use of the land. And then also in terms of, of, no, sorry.
So you're saying that LRT didn't necessarily result in intensification?
Yeah, well, it was, basically, a lot of the policies yielded a higher cost of, higher cost of land. The higher cost of land caused a higher cost of housing. And higher cost of housing really didn't give, really made us more closer to poverty levels as opposed to being, I'm just trying, can't think of the word I want to use, but sorry. But anyway, I mean, it really was, it was not necessarily a good thing. And they had a lot of facts and statistics on different cities that really have gone down that road. And if you look at, you know, how they fared after doing this, it was not always positive results. And so I think we really have to look carefully at what is being planned and what they're promoting and really see if that's something that we want to do.
Yeah.
Ultimately, I mean, the market's really driven us, for the most part anyway. And I suppose to be sensitive to what the Met Council wants isn't good or bad either way, because I don't know that it's going to, in the end, be what happens. Because back in 1980, they projected us at, at one time, over 100,000. The numbers that were, they took St. Louis Park densities and just plopped them down on top of us. And then suddenly in the 70s and 80s, cul-de-sac living came about. And of course, that's reverting back. So I mean, I almost, I almost trust the market that if we are needing to become a little bit more urbanized because of the millennial generation wanting that kind of, you know, housing, then I think we'll go that way. And I think these numbers probably, I mean, they look a little bit high at first, but because of the changing demographics and the, just that, I'm really intrigued by the millennial generation and what they're interested in, what they want, I can kind of see us evolving and moving more towards that as we redevelop. So I don't fear that. But I agree with you that, I mean, I don't think we've ever wanted or liked any outside agency dictating or really holding us hostage. If they incentivize it and we accept the incentives, fine, great, you know. But it's, so I'm agreeing with you, actually. I mean, I think both of us, I think probably all five of us are in agreement that at some point, I think we're going to develop okay. And we may even end up matching some Met Council expectations, but not because they made us, but because this, with millennial generation is probably going to drive this.
Yeah, it's just that some of their, some of their guidelines and some of their, you know, thoughts really are contrary to the market in a lot of cases and really drive a lower standard of living, because if you, you know. And so, and they're talking about urban sprawl. And really, you know, if you look at any urban area, even there is an example of a place in Sub-Saharan Africa, and they were looking at, you know, 1972 versus 2010, even though the population hadn't changed much, the sprawl had changed quite a bit. And so it's really more of a natural phenomenon that takes place in any city, in any area, and then not so much just in urban areas in the United States. And it's just, it's just a natural phenomenon that takes place in any city. It tends to grow over time, but that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah. I'm glad that you brought that up. And there were, in some of the Court of Opportunity meetings and some of the PSC meetings that I've attended for LRT, there were initially some discussions about having the same kind of zoning around all of the stops, like the cities along the corridor would come to agreement about what all the stops should look like in terms of what kind of housing and everything. And we, we kind of fought that often. We made it clear that we want to make our own decisions for our communities. But I share some of Brad's concerns about Met Council growth forecasts. I remember when we were first presented with these Thrive forecasts, I think it was like last fall, I was struck by the huge population increase they had projected for us and the very small increase that they had for Edina, for example, particularly when it came to...
It was Edina.
Yeah, it's Edina. Particularly when it came to things like affordable housing. But I'm just curious, with these figures, do they just look at the density of the land that we have, what the, how much empty land we have, and come up with some sort of formula? Or do they actually look at the land? Because Eden Prairie's pretty hard to intensify development because of all the wetlands and lakes that we have around that really impede a really nice grid road structure. So whereas some communities could handle a lot more intensification development because they have good crossroads, we don't. Do they look at that? That is a really good question which staff has asked. And when they came out with the growth forecast in the fall, we asked them to bring them back to us in smaller areas, what they call traffic area zones, so that we could see where they were projecting the growth. And some of our comments related to that, they were projecting growth in areas that have very established single-family neighborhoods where we don't ever anticipate those redeveloping. Whereas, you know, we anticipate the growth in the major center area in the Golden Triangle. So we asked them specifically to go back and look at that. But we did our own analysis with regard to whether we could accommodate this growth in the areas we've already identified for higher density and redevelopment rather than, you know, kind of the Met Council. And then the issue becomes infrastructure because you are, you know, obviously utilizing just a fewer number of highway exits and you're, you know, utilizing areas that already have certain water resources, et cetera. So that's why we wanted to issue that caveat, because we do not see it, that growth spreading out throughout the city. And they were showing some, you know, in the western part of the city where, again, we do not see, that isn't our vision. It's just these couple of areas that we consider the higher density. So those are the discussions as we get into the more detail, but we've already given them that heads up. And also, we were concerned in the fall with the employment numbers actually being too low in light of what's been going on already with UHG, et cetera. And we did get them to revise those up. So we are in constant discussions with the Met Council with regards to that. It doesn't seem to be a specific formula. They kind of looked at regional growth and then they're trying to allocate it to cities where they kind of think it could go, but it doesn't necessarily align with our policies. And can you touch a little bit on whether these are mandates or is this just a planning document for Met Council?
Right.
I mean, I know what it is, but we talked about it. Right. It is a planning document. It does guide a lot of what become more implementation policies that the city controls, like zoning, et cetera. But as Councilmember Case said, you know, generally, the Met Council seems to overestimate the amount of growth that might occur. And, you know, to a certain extent, the city does the same thing, just to make sure we're adequately planning for infrastructure and aren't taken by surprise there. But the market really dictates whether that growth will actually come and where exactly it will want to go, where you'll get the requests for development, et cetera. So it's by no means a mandate. Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. Can we also look at the fact that we have a lot of acreage and things like airports that can't be built on and former dumps? You know, not to speak of the wetland and lakes and everything, and we're close to being built out at this point. And certainly, there's some redevelopment areas where we ourselves anticipate some changes in zoning. But we're certainly not going to take, you know, big employees and say, "Sorry, this needs to be an apartment complex now." That kind of thing shouldn't happen because it would take overall jobs away from the region. And we are blessed with probably a higher number of jobs than many regions have. So you also have to take that into account. You don't just say, "Take away your multi-million dollar plant here and go move it to someplace else because they don't have enough and you have more." So a little bit does seem to be slightly simplistic at this point. And hopefully, we can underline some of the facts that we've had a comp plan, we're now increasing ours, but it has been planned development rather than just scattered. And we're also not going to take up, we've got more parks in a lot of the area, but we're not going to sell off the parks to go build anything on. People in the city don't want it that way. And so, though I'm in sympathy with putting it where you can put it and where it goes naturally and where the market would dictate it, I don't know that I'm in favor of artificial monopoly board type of expansion.
Councilmember Wixtem.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement on this. Janet, my question is, what, is this the affordable, what is it, the affordable housing or the Affordable Act, you know, the one that we always had with Met Council?
Oh, what is that called?
Liveable Communities.
Liveable Communities, that's it. So how does that join with this Thrive document?
Your Honor, Councilmember Butch Wixtem, the simple answer to that is that they try to integrate the two things. You'll see, one of the outcomes of this comp plan update is livability. So they are trying to integrate kind of those livable community concepts into our comprehensive plans. And they're becoming more specific. For example, they call out complete streets as something they want to see us address, which doesn't mean that we have to do a cookie cutter approach, but they want us to address it somehow, whether we would want that in certain areas and what it would mean to Eden Prairie. So, you know, I think that the Livable Communities program is also evolving and a portion of the funding is going specifically to transit-oriented development. So you see those things kind of tracking in a similar direction. There's also more emphasis on green in the Livable Communities program as grant applications are considered. So I don't know if I'm quite getting to it.
Yeah, you are. It's the metamorphosis of the Livable Communities. And I didn't see it in there, but it's embedded, as you said. So that's interesting. You know, that was always one that felt a little bit like a stick instead of a carrot in some ways.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then the other thing I wanted to say is, don't we have something like 35% of our land is in sort of green space or open space? So, I mean, that takes a big chunk, but that's the value that residents have had for so many decades. So, anyway, I think we're all in agreement on what we think about that document.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jeremiah. The next item is a report from the Park and Rec Director, specific to the Miracle Field fundraising update. And I see we have some people in our audience for that. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Sorry you had to wait till the end. Jay, did you want to?
Yeah, if I could, while they're coming up. We've had the fortune to work with them and these are truly some community builders. And they're working hard and they're here tonight to tell you about their efforts and to also hopefully inspire others to get behind what they're trying to do to make our community even better and more accessible to people, too. So I'll let them take it away and they'll give you an update on what they've been doing.
Thanks, Jay.
That mic doesn't work.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. It's probably a late today, the school board meeting, so I didn't think I was going to make it, but I ran over here and I was glad I was able to. But let me turn this meeting over to these gentlemen and these young gentlemen right here. These are some of the ballplayers that started this effort at the very beginning. And these are two of our great community leaders, in Butch Cavalo and John McCarthy.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trey Cavalo. And we've been working on like our community events. And we started with wristbands.
Right here.
And they have the Miracle Field website on them. And we're going to pass them out at the end to you guys.
Okay.
And we also have our website, which is on here. And as along to that, we have a Twitter page and Facebook page, which they'll talk about a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robin McCarthy. And in addition to our website, epmiracle.com, we also have a Facebook page, Eden Prairie Miracle League. We also have a table set up at key varsity baseball games to answer questions about the field and to help sell bricks to fundraise for it. And you can also buy the bricks online on our website, or you can fill out a form and send that in.
Hi, my name is Mike Espy. In addition to these efforts, we're also planning a community event, which we plan to have this summer after we have raised enough money to start building and start actually like building the field. And we're also, during that time, we're going to be trying to get kids to sign up to play in our Miracle League.
Good evening. My name is John McCarthy and I get to be part of this wonderful group. What I've been responsible for and working on is the website as well as some corporate sponsorships. And right now, we're kind of have a big effort going out and working with some corporate sponsors. I'll flash this up here. As an example, what the group has decided to do is we're kind of selling off pieces of the of the field. So, if you want to own home base, or your company wants to claim that you own the pitcher's mound, and all these corporations will get, you know, permanent recognition, because we're going to be buying them a brick that's going to be in a patio behind the field. What we're working on right now, though, is really to get the community event going on the brick sales. We finally have a website, we have a brick design, we pretty much have everything to go. We're just kind of at that stage where we have a few volunteers and people are kind of gathering right now, but we really kind of feel the momentum that's happening. We really appreciate what the city has done to allow us to convert one of the fields at Flying Cloud. Think it's going to be a great event. Couple of unique things that people have mentioned to me as I look at it, as people come to Flying Cloud, coming down Pioneer Trail, it's really going to be the entrance to the park, and people are going to see it, and they're going to know what Eden Prairie's all about. So, again, thank you to the council for allowing us to take this effort. Mike, see if you have a question for one of these kids, see if you can stump them, maybe. All day they're asking, are they going to ask us any questions?
Have any of you boys visited a Miracle Field in another community?
Trey, tell them the story.
Well, I used to play Freedom Prairie, but now I go to Whole Family High School. But we had a tournament three years ago in Lakeville, oh, no, yeah, Lakeville, while we went, and we saw the field there, and it was kind of, we saw them play when they were playing next to it, and I kind of thought, hey, we should try to get one of those going, and it kind of just, just a thought. And then a year and a half ago, it kind of came more of like a reality.
Great. That's nice. Then parents of ballplayers that are going out to these other fields and see Miracle Fields will understand what the concept is, which should make it easier sell, I would think.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much for what you're doing. It's a really honorable thing to do, and we're so excited for you. Hope things go well with your fundraising.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Anything else to bring before the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Thank you.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.